Morning.
I'm getting mad, but I just.
Wow.
Pretty given.
I think we're about to do it for the job.
Well, yeah.
And uh.
Start.
That makes sense.
Start.
Only like that's it.
I guess I'm doing three hours.
Hmm.
I've been short of sleep six and I'm not.
I'm scared, but I talk to these guys.
Yeah.
Oh.
I knew what I had.
Well.
I get that too.
Still looking.
Yeah, they'll come take us.
The longer time.
Yeah.
Literally long.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Yeah.
That's the couple of coffee that will cheer you up.
Yeah.
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 Be sure to clarify.
Yeah.
So I had that good. And what's the coffee?
What?
I want to give it.
Yeah.
I feel that.
Yes.
What are you doing?
Well.
Yeah, they.
Didn't have the engine last thing you told me.
It's powerful.
I don't know what I had.
Did that old lady still run itself right on that?
I saw first in one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
So I always said.
I don't understand it.
Yeah.
As most recent is in California, it's a terrible scary part of mine.
Yeah.
Uh, we say.
I know.
He backed into it one time.
It's our.
Still trying to figure out where I'm gonna.
It's a new shot.
A lot of play.
Uh.
It's all like a doggy heart.
And then.
Yeah.
He calls it.
He really meant it to him. Did it in a season.
And highway nine five, that's all time.
Yeah.
So the military shows you what you get.
Okay. I was your winner, bud.
Hey.
Well, I'm straight from Boston, July.
I'm listening to you.
Say to the dog, that's my second.
And well, I know he has to be sick for freshman. She's supposed to be getting sick.
Yeah.
And I was nervous. My social life is so controlled.
Credit card?
I think it depends on the year or session.
You know.
We live in a game.
And I just wanted to have some nap.
I had a single shot.
I wanted to.
Was it the first one in October? And my arm is sore and I had. Second January. Real sore.
So I was, I was gonna, I was just.
I don't know what to say.
My heart didn't.
Gotcha.
Do you have some money?
It was off a week.
For that.
Yeah.
They want a lawsuit, dude.
Yeah.
And he took.
Sorry.
With that's right.
Well.
Don't worry about it.
That's right.
No, he said, well.
Oh, is that true?
He's well, that child.
Yeah, he worked a few months.
He didn't even look, he hadn't got around.
He's a little fat.
Bring it, I would move it.
I can work on that.
I.
That's what he does. He literally does.
That's all it does.
I'm gonna work on it.
He's got.
I don't know.
You know, who's.
Like he.
Yeah, we're trying to target.
Your body, you just, you know.
Not a problem.
It's just like, man, I wash your finger there.
Yeah.
Man, dog, cool.
Yeah.
They ain't, uh, they live much.
He feels like he needs to.
No.
Definitely.
Yeah.
You know why?
Sounds like that's cute.
Yes, it's cute.
Exactly.
And it would stop.
Okay.
Stop right there.
I still had to do it.
You got any?
I don't know.
Well, sure.
But it happened.
And uh, cause I knew.
I don't know.
I was working.
And if I was there, he went up in his house for twenty something years.
Hmm.
You know.
I'm saying I was less saying these.
You know what I heard up here?
It was this morning.
Yeah.
I was so.
Doctor saying he is not sent a single case.
What is?
I'm saying that.
I guess it's because people.
They're right there.
In the social distance.
This unit.
What time you got?
I got.
Way down.
Way down.
Those poker rats so close to the food. We're in. Like to call this meeting Russ County Commissioners Court Order. It is February twenty fifth. Nine AM. I'd like to ask. Honorable Andy Vincent, lead us in prayer. Please remain standing for the pledge.
Father, we just thank you so much for this day. For we thank you for your love for us, your fans, your mercy. And thank you for this court hearing and to ask your blessings and decisions they make. It may be for betterment of our community. Thank you for, again, for your love for us and all the good things that you do. If you stay in my prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible. Mr. Whitworth is not here this morning. He's, he's kind of the. Fourth main guy at the Russ County Youth Expo Show. So that's where he is. First item on the agenda is to discuss possibly approve. Budget amendments and/or transfers. Since we don't have any ammo, we pass. Second, Mr. Gibson, all those in favor. Uh, all opposed. Motion passes. Number two, approve the February twentieth Russ County payroll.
Most for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Gibson, second from Mr. Kirkendall. All those in favor. Uh, all opposed. Motion passes. Number three, discuss possibly approve. Disaster declaration from February fourteenth, twenty twenty one. The way that works is Patrick got that done. We did it the same day as other counties did it. We signed it last week and we would have approved that on Thursday had we made a meeting for it. So what we had to do was come back yesterday and sign another one. We have been included in the individual assistance. Of course, all of the counties in the state were approved on the public assistance and through the governor's uh. Original disaster declaration, but we need to approve that in court today. So that our people in the county can still continue to apply for that. Patrick was supposed to be here. He might be confused by it being at ten o'clock. Anyway, he was gonna talk about that. But anyway, that's what that is about. We need to approve that. Cause it has to be done within seven days after it's signed by the Commissioners Court. And then it stays in place until. Uh, it's taken out by the county judge. All right?
Most for approval.
Motion from Mr. Gibson, second from Mr. Goff. All those in favor. Uh, all those opposed. Motion passes. Number four, discuss possibly approve leaving a part-time employee, a full-time operator two and hiring youth, part-time employee in precinct one.
On that. Last year, last year, we had a precinct one. There was two part-time employees. Had a couple of guys retire. And uh, one of the part-time employees moved into a full-time position. And I had an operator two that was moved to an operator one position. Leaving, leaving that open. Um, my current. Part-time employee has been with the county, been there precinct one for about seven years, I understand. And uh. I just, I feel like, you know, it is loyalty that he should be first in line for that position. And I have another applicant in mind for that part-time employee.
Are you downsizing any employees?
I'll be downsizing. It'll, it'll turn out to be. One employee less than I had, what was, we had last year. And I originally want that to go away, that part-time employment position. I want it to go away. And then the next couple of years, I just. My intention.
So you're gonna have one less employee than you, than was there last year?
Yes.
After it's all shook out?
Yes.
Okay. Can I make? That, that's a motion?
Yes, can I make that motion?
Yes. Second from Mr. Gibson, any other discussion? I've been, you know, in the mode of trying to downsize. And since you are downsizing. I'll, I'll be good with that. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Number five, discuss possibly approve order for the Russ County Environmental Specialists for period July first, twenty twenty to December thirty first, twenty twenty. That's Tammy Holmes reporting, she.
I'm looking to approve the report.
Second. Motion from Mr. Kirkendall, second from Mr. Goff. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Uh, all those opposed? Motion passes. Number six, discuss possibly approve request from Sheriff Valdez to apply for a possible change in billing options.
Morning. Morning. We had a fun week last week, didn't we? Uh, y'all did a fantastic job. Uh, I couldn't have got these roads cleared out without knowing where y'all were and doing the jobs that you did. So I'd like to thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
The uh. My request today is for the possibility of. Uh, applying for or getting a credit card through the county or specifically for the sheriff's. Specifically for my training budget alone. The problem that we have in this day and age with training for law enforcement is, like everyone else, um. The uh. COVID prevents us from going to a lot of places. Uh, in order to get the training that we need. Some of it is online. Uh, there are websites like Clausen Buck, uh, like OSS Academy. Those require credit cards. In order for us to get those classes. So our deputies can get, and our correction staff can sit down in front of a computer and take it online. Uh, they don't do billing, they don't do POs, they do credit cards. Uh, it's extremely difficult for us to be able to schedule these courses when not only we can't find them out in the world, whether it be Killor Academy or Angelina Academy or somewhere else, that we're forced to do these uh, online. I just have one with our civil deputy. Um, the way it, the only other way I can do it right now is to have the deputy pay for it out of their own pocket. And then reimburse them. Uh, they're doing these classes for the betterment of the, of the sheriff's office and more importantly, the people of this county. Um, some of our deputies do not have credit cards. Which makes it that much more difficult. This credit card, again, would only be used uh, for our training budget. So we would not be uh, purchasing items. Uh, we would be purchasing uh, class space. And again, that would be, um, that credit card would be going straight in from our training budget, so that money will always be coming out to pay for that credit card bill. Uh, Ms. Akers and I, we've discussed it. Uh, I know sometimes depending on what the billing cycle is, there may be a uh, a late fee. Uh, late fees are usually minimal, uh, and, and it won't be very often. It's not like I'm gonna be using this credit card every month, uh, throughout this entire training cycle. Uh, but when we have to have a class online. It's that much easier to get this done and get it over with. And, and that's the only thing I would ask uh, for that, that credit card.
Who will have control of that credit card?
It would be the training coordinator, which would be right now the chief deputy. Um, and I ultimately, the way it is, if a deputy comes in and they want to take a class, they fill out a sheet saying they need to, to have this class or they want to have this class. It goes through their sergeant, their lieutenant, then the chief deputy, and then I'll ultimately approve it. Because it has on there, if it's a class where we have to go out of town, then you have to put, you know, per diem, hotel stays, things like that. Just for an online class, it would simply say, this is a ClausenBuck.com class. And then they would get approval through sergeant, lieutenant, and then the chief and myself. That's whenever that would be paid for.
So when they go to. College Station or training?
Yes.
They're having hotels and all that stuff. So you're gonna use that credit card for that?
Just for the class part of it, not for the hotel part. Those you can still do, you can contact a hotel ahead of time and say, hey, we, we're gonna bring a check. I just wanna do this for the actual class themselves. Some classes don't allow for you to do, most do, uh. Whenever you get there to pay for it by check. Or even by purchase order if it's an academy. But that's the online classes that are, that are most pressing for us. Because that's where the bulk of our classes are gonna be probably for the next year, maybe even two, depending on what happens with the uh, CDC.
So with that purchase of that online class, there'll be five or six or multiple officers or just one individual?
Sometimes it would be, uh, depending on what the online class, for instance, if there, if we have several guys that need to go through culture and personal. Or they need to go through a mandated class through T-CO. Then we may have five or six at a time. Most of those are thirty-five dollars a piece. I think the most, I think for mandated classes, eighty. So we have a twenty-four thousand dollar training budget that we have every year. And that would be, that's what that, that money would come from. The per diem and the hotel stuff would be like it normally has been, um, by checks.
From the auditor's standpoint, what kind of problems does this present, is Akers?
Um, it would just be, so I also discussed with our outside auditor and they would have some additional testing on this, um, the receipt, we'd have to have receipt, obviously, for every single transaction. They would actually want to see every single receipt that came through. Um, I would actually, if this wasn't for, we actually made the recommendation to have that held in my office. Um, and, and then as they, they check out, they would get a PO at that time and would in fact, um, you know, tell us, give a printout ahead of time, what it would be, get prior, you know, how we do our normal POs or prior approval. And um. And then when they bring it back with the receipt and all the documentation, um, and then if anything else were to be charged, that was not approved ahead of time, it would be paid by the individual if you checked it out. So it would be, it would, um, understanding that they would be charging. It would be more work on, in our office, um, as well as our outside auditors, um, just for a, like the controls, he does, there are many controls, so it would have to be a very, very, very strict. Process. So that's. And that's why we have not. Done one thus far. It opens up a can of worms as far as, okay, he needs one. But other offices are going to want one as well after that. So that is, that is the issue why we've never done this thus far.
Say if it, if it is, if we do approve it, have you looked at credit card companies?
No.
Want to.
I, I was just gonna do the research until. After this.
So that will come before, before it as well, I guess, if we do approve it.
Right.
If you have an online class, they usually do that. For offer that far enough in advance that they have time to sign up. And then go through her office and send the check.
The Clausen Buck does not. Wh- whenever you go to a Clausen Buck class, when you go to the online website. That's what it asks for. It asks for whenever you go to sign up for um, racial profile. It will, whenever you go through and you sign up to register for that class, the only thing it pulls up is MasterCard, Visa, American Express. And then you fill out all the regular stuff, just like you would any other purchase that you would make on any other Amazon or anything like that.
Do they charge immediately? Or does it charge uh, when the class is taken place?
It is, you can go online and you can look a month in advance, two months in advance. And the deputy want to go to this class and take it on, let's say, a month from today. They print that sheet out saying, this is the class they need to go to, this is the class they have to have for their T-CO license or whatever. They turn it into their sergeant, it goes through the approval chain. That would take two days tops. Then we could, they could bring it to me, sign it, I could bring it to the auditor's office, okay, this is the class that this guy needs to go to, or this lady needs to go to. We need a credit card to punch this ticket for. Eighty-five dollars for this class. Get this, get it, punch it through, verify the class. That gives them the opportunity on that date to log in, because it'll give you a login code at that point.
I think uh, for to now, as far as other courts, or, you know, commissioners, the reason why we haven't done this in the past is because it bypasses the commissioners as far as approving it. So what if they didn't want to approve this? How would we give the money back? That's the only, that would be the issue as far as if it bypasses their control. I mean, of course, I look at all the POs ahead of time.
Yes.
But as far as now, if we have a check, we don't want that, okay, they've gone to so many classes, we, they're saying, they don't. Shouldn't go with anymore. Something like that. They, with the check, they can say, no, we're not gonna pay it. We hold the check, we're the check. But the credit cards already purchased. So there would be a um, responsibility on that. Either yourself or the, the staff member who's present that they have to reimburse if the court did not approve.
They would not approve training courses?
They, they approve every single bill that comes through. So I'm not sure, I'm just, I'm just looking at a possible.
As possi, it's, is a possibility.
And while, this is one of the main reasons.
Probability, but it is possible.
That's the main reason, I think, I believe, my understanding is that we haven't done this before. This is the main, that was the main, one of the main reasons we haven't done this prior as far as my.
There, there's, there's no train that we, that, that we would send any deputy or jailer or dispatcher to, that would not be something that would either better the agency, that individual officer, uh, or this county. We're not gonna send them to, uh. Of course, it's not within the scope and sequence of what they do. Uh, like I said, most of the classes are our T-CO mandates. We don't have a choice. We have to take these classes. We have forty hours every two years that we have to take. Some of these classes, uh, we can't, we can't even host for other agencies to come to our office because, because of the pandemic. So we're trying to do as many of them online as possible, as is every other agency. Uh, all of the agencies that I've worked for in the past, we've had the ability to just go in and get the purchase card and punch it in right then without uh, any approval, as long as it's coming out of the budget, provided the money is in there, in the budget for that class.
You, you have, you said, you know, roughly twenty-four thousand in, in your budget for training. What do you spend monthly? Yeah, I mean, I know it's.
Well, there's so much, we don't have any training at all.
Or the maximum, you think, monthly?
The maximum I could have is probably. Just the classes alone. When we start doing mandates, probably no more than. Four hundred a month. Because these are mainly either eight-hour classes that are mandated by T-CO or a few of them are twenty-four hour or forty-hour classes, which is all five days. Uh, and even those classes are relatively minimal compared to, um, I mean, if I'm gonna send someone to a basic SWAT class, for instance. If I send them down to combat shooting tactics, that's seven hundred and ninety-five dollars for that class. Because it is a local class, he does accept checks. All academies accept checks. The online courses do not. And this is what I want to use it for. I don't wanna buy ammo with it. I don't wanna buy anything other than the online training courses.
Let me ask a question. Uh. This is usually done, what, a month in advance?
Yes, sir.
All right. We meet three times a month. Would it be possible to get that prior approval from the court? And then go through the auditor's office to. Sign up for those?
I wouldn't think so.
You know, cause we meet fifth, the second Monday. And, you know, and we have met other times besides the fifth and the twentieth and the second Monday, if we needed to do something.
Sure.
Would that be possible?
Yes.
All right. Secondly, have they done, you say they, are they doing this neck, huh, skin? They got a credit card?
Oh, yes, sir. The only approval we have to have, or we had to have down there, it don't work anymore, uh, was the sheriff. Yeah, none of those, I mean, the bills were paid to the Commissioners Court. Uh, but as far as training goes, these are, these are things that we have to do that even if the board doesn't approve it, we still have to have it done. It's just a matter of how we need to make sure it gets done.
My question is. And I fully understand your point, and I don't think anything's gonna go, or a whole brigade didn't go south, is. Can we meet on this again next week?
Sure.
And take a little time to let it soak in, because a credit card scares me to death. And.
And I, and I understand that, uh, which is why I don't wanna have, I didn't come here asking for a, a blank credit card that I can go purchase tires with or a new car with. I just want it for the train, because there's no other way to pay for it.
Rebecca, I have a question for you. Say with the possibility that we do get a credit card. Would it, would it base, you had mentioned, you know, the other departments within the county, there's wanting to follow suit with that. Is there any way we could have one credit card that you're in control of and you can charge different charges through different agencies?
I would only feel comfortable if it was um, approved prior, like any charges were approved in court prior.
Right, but it.
That's, that's the only way I would feel comfortable about doing that. It, it would be a possibility.
We could have a credit card and say the, say the sheriff's department needs to charge online classes. And then when you reconcile that, you can pull money from his budget there, but say, you know, in other situations, after it goes through the court, we could put it on that card also and no way we wouldn't option.
The only, the other thing I discussed with um, with the sheriff is that if any fees were incurred as far as it would be charged to his budget because he's more request number, um, that's the case that we have to come out of it, come out of the line of his. But we would, it would be a no interest, like we would not ever not pay it. Um, and then the only thing, the other counties have actually gone into a problem with, with the credit card is, um, if there is a fraudulent charge, that in the more people, the more likelihood of fraudulent charges. Um, and how to get that disputed. Sometimes that is a difficult task as well. That, that's the other issue.
That would be a favor paying any late fees.
Yeah.
You know.
Which is why we could do this in the morning.
Planning issue.
Sure, sure.
You know, somebody comes in on Friday and I wanna go to class next week, I'm sorry, you can't go.
Yeah.
I agree with Greg. I mean. Things talking about, I'll make a motion.
Your motion.
Or did you motion to table?
I did, I did. I did. Motion passed. Second from Mr. Goff. You good with that, Mr. Kirkendall?
Yeah, I'm good tabling it.
All right. Table it next week. I guess I should say all those in favor. All right. Number seven, discuss and approve the following reports for January 2020, Rush County Council, one and three, and Rush County Justice Base, three and four.
I'm over the way of approving the reports.
Second. Those from Mr. Kurganoff, second from Mr. Goff. All those in favor? All those opposed, motion passed. Let's see, discuss possibly approve the following utility pipeline request. A East Texas telephone co-op proposed place fiber optic cable under across the roadway, Cattle Road 294 in Precinct 2, and East Texas telephone proposed place fiber optic under across the roadway of Cattle Road 2127 in Precinct 2.
I'm over the way of approving items A and B.
Those from Mr. Kurganoff, second from Mr. Goff. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. C, East Texas telephone co-op proposed place fiber optic cable under across the roadway of Cattle Road 447 in Precinct 4. Motion for approval. Second. Those from Mr. Gibson, second from Mr. Kurtlandoff. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Public comment, no action to be taken. I want to commend the sheriff and the commissioner for the job you did last week during the, what do they call that, a poll? Blizzard. Whatever it was.
Nightmare.
And I have heard from a number of people in the community that were, wanted to congratulate and thank y'all for the job y'all did clearing those roads. It was a great help. I sent you something, forwarded you something earlier in the week on redistricting. Smouse and bass is who we contracted with to help us with that, make sure we get it right. And... I had high hopes that, that what would happen was that we wouldn't have to redraw any lines, because the population hadn't changed that much. I don't know if that would be the case or not, but they're not gonna get their numbers according to this in a time and a matter, but I'm sure they'll get it done. I know I don't have to remind y'all that the youth project show is going on this week, and have a lot of young people in Rush County that are involved in that, and we need to show our support of that whenever we can. Anything else? Oh, you get anything?
Yes, sir.
Dan, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Andrew? Sheriff, you got, you think you have a short to tell us?
Oh, well, next week I'll have the, our next commissioner meeting, I'll have the racial profiling and the asset forfeiture reports completed and turned in for your approval. And we're doing some, some really good stuff right now with, now that all the roads are cleared, getting back to some sense of normalcy, and getting a few other things accomplished as well. Oh, we did get a, I got an email from Unsolved Mysteries. I thought it was a joke, but it wasn't. They're doing a series of podcasts, and they want to come here and relook at a couple of our missing persons cases. Ken Flint and one other one. I wasn't familiar with that one, I don't remember the name of that particular one. But they want to come and do a podcast, re-interview their family members, re-interview any investigators that are still here from those cases, which on the other one there wasn't, but on, on Ken Flenser is. So they will be contacting us in the next couple of weeks to see if that can be done.
Ken Flint, that'll 84?
Yes.
How long has it been, three years, four years?
Almost three now. We have seven unsolved missing persons cases in this county from the last eight years. I didn't know there was that many, I thought it was five. We went back and looked, Lieutenant White and I went back and looked, and it's actually seven. So there's a couple more that are older than that, but those were like 20 years ago. And that one was also, it was a man enterprise one as well. So I don't know what's gonna come of it, but maybe it'll, it'll open up some memories, and maybe somebody can come forward and see if we can, can help the Flint family and the other family try to get this done and get it over with, so they can move on.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anybody else? True payment of bills?
Rebecca, on that, page one, advanced drainage system? Is that Precinct 1?
Right, yes, that yours?
I don't recall that.
Make sure.
Just, I don't know, was that COVID?
That's what normally does, or normally COVID's, you get charged with? Okay.
Where is kids, social? Leatherford?
No.
I need a better name. Okay, it is, should be Precinct 4.
Okay.
That's why we're reviewing.
Don't throw me any more curveballs. She told me she was gonna do that. The big one with the southern software, I guess that was from when we had the north tower.
That's, that's just our reporting system.
Oh. Motion to approve. Second. Discussion with the...
Yes, sir. We can get budget pronounced, too.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed. Y'all had a nice day. Yeah, y'all, I'm over with yours. Thank you, Ms. Kurganoff, all those in favor?